Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Temple City Council for Thursday, September 2nd. Please rise, we'll have our indication and pledge of allegiance. This is by Pastor Dana Williamson with Emmanuel Leeder Church. Pastor, welcome.
Greetings to the council in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, and to the people gathered here to be neighbors to one another. One of the greatest illusions in the world is the hope that even those injustices in this world are cured solely by legislation. One of the greatest cautions to politicians is that their decisions are guided by the sins of the multitude. Their great responsibility and guilt will be truly personal, for they may have promoted the wrong thing. For that, we pray for our leaders, that they never be moved from the straight path. Chuck Olson noted chapter to Congress, it's a very tough times during his watch, used the following words to the men and women which he had responsibility. He said, "Ladies and gentlemen, civil government originated as ordinance of God. It is in one sense. God's response to the nature of people themselves." He goes on to say that while civil government cannot redeem the world, or be used as a tool to establish the kingdom of God, it does set the boundaries for our human behavior. Government can never be a remedy for sin, but it must and can be a means to restrain it. Saint Paul tells us in Romans, Chapter 13, "Let every person be subject to the governing authorities; for there is no authority except from God, and those that exist have been instituted by God. Therefore, whoever resists the authorities, resists what God appointed, and those who resist will incur judgment. For rulers are not a terror to good conduct, but to bad. Would you have no fear of the one who is an authority? You do what is good, and you will receive his approval, for he is God's servant for your good." We pray. Keep us, Lord, so awake in the duties of our individual callings, that we may all rest in your peace and wake in your glory. Lest the discussions and decisions may occur this day, that they may be a blessing to us all tomorrow. Keep and open our minds to your will for our community, that it may be a shining city on the hill, revealing your presence, your guidance, and your blessing. Keep the leaders of our community ever mindful of the great responsibility that you've entrusted to them, and, Lord, protect them from all harm and from temptation. Lord, hear our prayers this day in the name of Jesus, and bless our nation, as together we pledge our allegiance to its flag and to our almighty and merciful God. To the flag, we pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic and for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of our Father, and of our Son, and of our Holy Spirit.
Pastor, thank you for those words. Thank you for being with us. Our next item on the agenda is public appearance. We will receive comments now from Ms. Genevieve Gray regarding Maxine Ray Clark swimming pool. Ms. Gray?
It's a pleasure to be here today. Again, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for giving us the, you know, the opportunity to read, or to take a look at the swimming in the Temple area on the East Side. And even though reading is my priority, swimming is a top priority for me also. I know it is something that you can do mentally and physically. It is an excellent sport. It's also excellent exercise. And I found that a young man by the name of Colin Jones, he was on the Olympic team in 2008, and he was a lone black that made the Olympic, and they won the silver by ten relay. And I was looking at him, and right now, he's crisscrossing the country, encouraging and teaching African Americans, you know, encouraging them to really take a look at swimming. It's one of the, like I said, one of the best kinds of sports. Also, he said that over seventy percent of blacks could not swim, and I know he's right. But I did not know that it was that high. And he said that when he was three years old, that he almost drowned. So he had gone down a tube, I think it's a two-deep water park. He didn't know how to swim, but he didn't realize that once he goes down, he can't get up. So he said he didn't know how he'd get up. He did anything he could to try to come back to the top of the water, but he couldn't. And luckily, a lifeguard spotted him and saved his life, gave him, you know, the mouth-to-mouth resuscitation, and he saved his life. And from there on, his parents put him in swimming. And even as he got older, other black kids, you know, they kind of teased him because he could swim. He had to hide the fact that he could swim. And it's really not a popular thing, you know, with black Americans, but I feel like because we have not been exposed. But as we go on, right here in Temple, we had this opportunity, we found that black kids really wanted to learn how to swim. They were very excited. We had a capacity of swimming classes, and they put it over at Ray Clark's. I mean, we had close to 113 that wanted to sign up, but we could only get around about sixteen, nothing but two in there. So that was something, you know, that we were looking at, who still have those young people that really want to learn how to swim. So we're looking at next year, that's why we wanted to take a real look, you know, at this situation. I found that also that there are fifty-eight percent of Hispanics that did not know how to swim. I didn't know that, so I'm really not in a life in this project. And right here in Temple, you know, like I said, we're going to do what we can. Colin Jones is crisscrossing the nation, but I feel like that we can be, right here in Temple, we can help young people. They needed, so many of them drown in adolescent period, not even know that, adolescent is seven to eighteen-year-olds. It's a lot of life that young blacks drown, because they cannot swim if they haven't been exposed to it. So what we're doing now, we're going to different organizations and talking to young parents, trying to get them involved early, to let young people, you know, learn how to swim at an early age. I love it myself, but I, you know, like I said, we had an opportunity, we were back in the late fifties and early sixties when Temple had a student union. So we love it, and we do know that it is a life support, it's something that we need as a lifeline, and I wanted you to take a look at what Colin Jones is doing. He's crisscrossing the nation, and he's trying to make a difference. I think here in Temple, we can make a difference here in Temple, helping young people, African Americans, Hispanics, whites. I mean, it doesn't matter to me that we need to learn how to swim. I have eight hundred plus signatures here, that we got across, the city physicians of Temple signed a petition wanting to keep Maxine Ray Clark's school open for his parents'. So eight hundred plus signatures that I would like you to take a look at. We want the car to, we are willing to work with cancer for any way we can to encourage parents to give their kids a lot of swimming. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Thank you for being on the point on this, and bringing us to us, and giving us this kind of presentation. We appreciate that, really, again. Next item is an opportunity for public comment. Citizens who desire to address the council, I mean, a man may sign up to do so prior to the meeting. Public comments will be received during this portion of the meeting, and the comments will be, we would ask that you limit them to two minutes. Not have any discussion or pay attention to any of the comments brought forth in this portion of the meeting. So, Ms. Susan Peoples?
In reference to part two, to just reiterate that this plan has a big role, I would also just like to give you my views of what we learned on the time that it allowed us to keep the school open. The numbers did actually increase. Unfortunately, we were not able to accommodate as many that wanted to take the swimming lessons. That was disappointing to us, but we took as many as we could. Also, in speaking of coming pounds, on the day that it opened, we had a display board that we talked to all the children about, when he was three years old, that her mom was drowning. This encouraged the parents to wanting to put their children in that swimming class. And although we weren't able to actually, within short time, get about thirty-two children to take the swimming class, we had one kid. And the fact that we only had two classes, two levels, one and two, that if we had had a three, level three at Clark's, we would have, actually have more kids to be able to swim. So in considering the situation with Clark's School, we hoped also that we consider adding the swimming lessons at Clark's School. It was just something that Mr. Support actually allowed us to do, to increase the numbers for this time. But we would also like to have those classes at Clark's School, also like go to another level. We had some children to take the swimming lessons twice, because there wasn't another level that we could go to. So that is a concern of ours, and hopefully, in the consideration of keeping it open, that would be something that would be reconsidered.
Thank you, Ms. Peoples. Ms. Peoples was the only one signed up to speak, so that concludes our public comment portion. The next item is to receive a report on sale of seventeen million, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, city and Temple Texas utility revenue, Assistant Revenue Bond Series 2010. Ms. Marner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. At your last meeting on August 19th, you delegated authority for the sale of bonds not to exceed seventeen million, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to the city manager and the director of finance. On August 25th, the city applied and received ratings published by Standard and Poor's for those bonds. On August 30th, the city received competitive bids, and the sale was awarded for the bonds. On September 15th, we expect the funds to be delivered for these bonds. Next slide, quickly, those bonds, again, the amount authorized was not to exceed seventeen million, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. These bonds were for nine projects. I'm not to go over all of the projects, but the major project is replacement of eighteen-inch water line from the water treatment plant to the loop of Charter Oaks, and a water treatment plant generator, and Bird Creek wastewater line replacement, and then design of the Temple Delta Regional Sewer System landing design. And tonight, Dan Wigler, our financial advisor, the specialized public finance advisor, is here to give you a report on the details of that sale.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Ms. Wigler, welcome. Great. Happy to be here.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As shown on the board, as Tracy mentioned, as required with every bond sale, we apply the bond rating from Standard and Poor's. These days, in this economic climate, it's not always just a rubber stamp on where you're at. The good news is, I'll hit the highlights in this report. Your rating on utility debt was affirmed at a double A rating, that is second to the highest rating that you can have. Triple A is your highest rating, then double A plus, and double A. So double A is in the upper echelon of credits. We hope as strong as the rating that you carry, that will solicit a lot of interest, and I'll go into the bids here in just a second. The comments from Standard and Poor's include, "The rating reflects our opinion of the system politically stable and diverse service area economy, consistently strong financial performance and resulting asset service coverage, strong system liquidity, and competitive utility rates." I think it's important to note, everything's positive. It's recognized the strength with which you operate your utility system and position you're headed in to be able to fund projects of this order. And the booklet that's before you, all this information is from a much greater hotel, I won't go through the page, but it's there for your resource. The next page I'm going to hit on is the big thing, as Tracy mentioned, on Monday, the 30th, we were seeing bids. As you can see, there's a lot of offers in this bond sale considered in Temple. Thirteen firms there, either individually or as part of syndicates. As you can see, we're a beneficiary, Wells Fargo Advisors giving a low bid at a 3.272493% interest rate. And this is on a twenty-year term obligation. And we went back and looked and researched, over the last twenty years, this is the lowest interest rate on this term of debt that the cities have obtained. You may recall, we were saying here about a year ago, telling you the 3.92% was the worst interest rate on the GO issue. Unfortunately, rates have come down even further, and again, typically on the utility issue, those interest rates may be a little higher. But this sale is the lowest, the rating really is final, a double A, speaks to the function of this utility system. But again, we had many bids to sort through, but Wells Fargo was the one that we recommended to accept, and that all the good friends. Finally, the last page I'm going to touch on is the graphic. I think what's important on this page, the far left-hand side of the page is the year 2000, the far right-hand side of the page is last Friday. And what this indicates is we are again at some of the lowest interest rates historically. And it's a very good time to invest in infrastructure, because the cost of funding is so low. So with that, I'll be glad to hear any questions you have, but congratulations on the wonderful ceremony, and a number of good things to support that.
Thank you, Ms. Wigler. Council questions, so I'll move to the bond sale or the writing. That's great news. Thank you, Mayor. Good job. Thank you, Tracy. Well done. Next three items are budget items. I will read items five, six, and seven together, and we will conduct public hearings and vote separately on these items, but for presentation purposes, let me read all three of these into the record. Item five is a public hearing to conduct a public hearing and consider a resolution adopting the city's budget for fiscal year beginning October 1st of 2010 and ending September 30th of 2011, including the operating budget for 2010, 2011, capital improvement program in fiscal and investment policies. Item six is a first and final reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving the tax rule and authorizing calculation of the amount of tax that can be determined for all real and personal property in the city for the tax year 2010 to be considered on an emergency basis. And item seven is a first and final reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance levying taxes and setting a tax rate for the city for the tax year 2010, making the appropriation for the regular operation of the city to be considered on an emergency basis. And we'll start off with item five, and Mr. Blackton will begin with that person.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. We have reached the end of the journey, this evening, relative to your budget and that budget process, a journey that many of you have traveled before, but nonetheless, the end of the journey for this year. The presentation we put together is one that Council, you have seen mostly before. We may insert a couple of new slides just to highlight a few things. But bear with me, I'll try to go through it quickly, but I also want to give you an opportunity. If you have any questions about any of the slides or any of the numbers, we'd be happy to go over those. The slides are put together in the order that you see on the screen, briefly go over the calendar and the process. Fence posts started back in February with those this year, and we'll close that tonight. Our fiscal, Tracy is going to cover the fiscal budgetary and investment policies that your budget is based upon. Budget overview and highlights, I'll go over those very, very quickly, and then again, turn over to Tracy again for the tax rule and the rate highlights also. Budget calendar, key dates, I mentioned just in my opening comment, that when we end the journey tonight relative to the budget adoption, you see the first date on the calendar there is February 18th this year. Council was briefed on our process issues, and we talked about fence posts, which are the guidelines for the development of the budget, and I'll highlight a couple of those here in just a moment. But we formally started this process in February. I can tell you that from an administrative standpoint, from a finance standpoint, budget process isn't a year-round process these days. We usually start really around, my office usually starts around Thanksgiving, a little bit before that, working on the next budget, so we'll have about a forty-five-day respite here, so to speak, before we start working on the 2012 budget. But a long process, one that involves multiple briefings, multiple discussion points, multiple workshops, multiple opportunities for council, staff, residents to get involved and engage in the process. The last date you see on the calendar there is September 2nd, the adoption of budget and setting a tax rate to support that budget. These are the fence posts I mentioned just a moment ago, which, as I said, are policy guidelines for the development of the budget. This year, Council and I looked at four fence posts or four guide markers, maintaining our fiscal soundness, maintaining your tax rate, aligning your strategic financial and tactical plans or work plans for the year, as well as focusing on our core missions and our core activities. Those fence posts, I told many folks, the top two fence posts, this year, I would say, were really the top two fence posts. We needed to make sure that in today's economic environment, that we continue to do what we have done each and every year, but that is to maintain our fiscal stability, our fiscal soundness. And I think this budget represents that and does that, and then, of course, maintaining our tax rate, and we'll talk about that in just a moment, too. Maintaining our fiscal soundness, we talked about what that means, not just the statement itself, but what's behind that. It means that we do a balanced and conservative budgeting approach, estimating revenues on the low and the low side, and expenses on the high side, but trying not to get too far out of balance in either one of those. We want to maintain strong bond ratings, you just saw some of the benefits, one of the benefits of maintaining a strong bond rating just a moment ago, in terms of the debt issuance and the favorable interest rates that we're receiving result. A healthy, reserved rainy day fund balance are also part of being fiscally sound and strong. We have a consistent policy for, one, we have a policy, and then two, we have a consistent policy for the use of our unreserved fund balance, capital expenditures, strategic investments on initiatives, economic development matrix. We're really focused on analyzing and assessing each year what we might expand from unallocated or unreserved fund balance. Typically, the general guideline from my perspective has been, it needs to be one-time related type expenses or expenses that we can look at, not a one-time expense, not exclusively. That's the guide marker. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Tracy, because I think she's wanting to make some comments about, again, our fiscal and budgetary policies that relate to that.
Thank you, David. As David mentioned, included in the annual adoption process of budget, we include two policies within that, one is the fiscal and budgetary policy. Just wanted to briefly overview the statement. The broad purpose of this policy is to enable the city to achieve and maintain a long-term, stable, and positive financial condition. And again, these policies are within the budget document. And they cover many, many areas, just to highlight a few. This is the operating budget, the revenue policies, capital budget and program. Next slide out. It includes also our asset management, debt management, financial condition, reserves and stability ratios within this policy, mentioned that it's set out the rainy day fund, what the council is setting that policy, and also staffing and training. And again, what before you tonight is that policy and no changes have been made or recommended this year. An additional policy that's included, to present to you annually, is the investment policy. I wanted to highlight just a few of the areas it covers. It covers objectives, the city's objectives in order of priority, for safety, liquidity, and yield. The policy also covers the diversification of the assets within the investments. We cover the authorized investments. Next slide. We can only invest in instruments that are authorized under this policy. And the policy also sets forth reporting requirements. Some of those reporting requirements are set by Public Funds Investment Act and Tatters Zation Act that are approved by, are statutory requirements. The last item that's covered by the investment policy is purchases of investments. We have to have pre-approved list of brokered areas we can purchase from, and just delivery versus payment on those investment transactions. Covers, turn it back over to you, David.
Thank you, Tracy. The next fence post that I also wanted to highlight tonight is maintaining the tax rate. And again, as Council's discussed, for many years, this has been really a guidepost for us. And what that means is that the adopted tax rate will be within 2.99% above the effective tax rate or not above the effective tax rate. And the effective tax rate, just as a reminder to Council, is the tax rate that provides the same amount of tax revenue for the upcoming year as the current year, except for the value of the new property newly added to the tax rules. I added two asterisks to this, and Council saw this slide before, and very familiar with that policy and that process, but I did add two asterisks tonight, because I just thought it was important to kind of highlight that for the FY 2010, 2011 budget, the total taxable values, both for commercial and residential combined, decreased by a little less than half a percent from FY 09, 10. The next bullet there, the proposed tax rate of 56.79, is below the effective tax rate calculation, which is a decrease of about 1.1%. Those two factors, to my knowledge, I couldn't find the last time that had occurred, which again, is an indication of several things. Number one, that we're not immune from the national economic picture, but also how relatively strong our local economy is relative to the national recession. I've looked at a lot of budgets and numbers for those same types of valuations, I mean, assessed valuations and things like that, from across the country recently, and these numbers are very, very strong compared to many, many, many places around the country. I've got just a series of pie charts here to give, again, just a very big picture macro level view of the budget, and I'll go over these very quickly, but all of our revenue for FY 2011 budget, the proposed budget revenues, the thing I like to highlight about that chart is the blue, the red, and the green pieces of that pie. We have a little over ninety-four point three million dollars in revenue we project for next fiscal year. The red and the blue are property and sales tax, and the green is our water and wastewater revenues. So about one-third of our, a little more than a third of our revenues from property and sales tax. And in terms of our expenditures, again, all funds, a little more than ninety-six, almost ninety-seven million dollars. The thing I highlight, that I like to highlight on that chart is the blue piece, which is the largest piece, and that's the general fund expenditures. And again, a number from the previous chart, property tax and sales tax, which makes up the majority of the funding for our general fund, but most of the expenses, over half, well, less than two-thirds are associated with the general fund. And then just a few comments on the general fund. Again, honing in just a little closer, or a little bit more finely, for your FY 2011 proposed budget, again, your revenues are there, you see sales tax in blue, property tax in red. And in charges for services, which is not an insignificant portion of our revenue projections, almost 20%, but a fairly diverse pie graph in terms of where revenues come from. Again, the thing I highlight there is what property taxes certainly pay, our contributed significant share. We have other pieces of the pie, revenue pie, that are also very significant. And the other thing I highlight on that chart is in, sort of toward the bottom right there, the budget proposes no effective tax rate or solid rate increases. there, the budget proposes no effective tax rate or solid rate increases this year. Total expenses, approximately $54.8 million, as has historically been the case, I don't think we could find a year when it's not been this way, but the majority of our expenses are in public safety. That's always been a very, very high priority for every budget I think the city has filed. Again, total expenses by type, also something that I think historically has not altered or varied very much at all. The city, as you've heard me say many times, is a service-based organization, and as a result, most of our expenses are in services or in people, and so almost two-thirds of our expenses are associated with people. We have had some budget challenges this year, and as I mentioned a moment ago, the national recession, international recession, I guess, continues to impact the city's budget. Our two major funds, two major general fund revenues, property tax and sales tax, are projected to be flat or perhaps slightly declining in 2011. If that occurs, we could have a second year of actual and a third year of projected sales tax revenue, again, something fairly unprecedented for in many of the respects. As a result, as we developed the budget this year, I asked the departments to hold the line, really very, very, very limited on new programs and new services, with one exception, and that is an enhanced crack ceiling program in our streets division, and that really represents a reallocation of dollars, existing dollars, and program activities, not so much an increase in expenses associated with the streets division. Second, our property tax revenue, our second largest source of revenue in the general fund, the proposed tax rate of 56.79 for $100 valuation, you see what it includes in terms of the INS and the MNO, that's based on certified tax appraisal roll of $3.2 billion, a little over that, and as I mentioned a moment ago, that represents a little less than a half a percent decrease from last year's appraised value, and again, that's an asterisk, that does not happen very often. Sales tax is our largest source of revenue in the general fund. Many people think it's property taxes, but it is sales tax, accounts for about 28% of the general fund. We budgeted sales tax at about $14.8 million, that's the decline of about 3.2% over the adopted budget for this year. Historically, the city has seen about a 4% growth in our sales tax revenue, but as I said just a moment ago, the last two years, unless something remarkable happens for August and September receipts, we will see a second straight year of a slight decline in our sales tax. Couple of areas that I did want to highlight, program areas and service areas in the budget, the Sammons Golf Course, $350,000 for golf courses improvements approved by the voters in November of 2007 on election. Three areas we're going to focus on, resurfacing the greens, upgrading the irrigation system, redesigning the course, adding some length to the course also. We have been working on timing the improvements and work on the golf course with a major public works project, Bird Creek Sewer Project, and approve and replace a major sewer truck line across our city. The course, as a result, will be closed in January for at least six months, and the FY budget reflects an increased revenues and decreased expenditures associated with that closure. The other program that I wanted to highlight was one I mentioned a moment ago, too, the street maintenance. In FY 2010, this year, the street department division, I want to compliment Streets Division, Nicole, Michael and Kenny and many folks who've worked on this, but we created something that we've never had, which was the pavement condition assessment report, very significant document that will help us focus, prioritize and develop our work plans for what we need to be doing on our streets for many, many, many years. That report recommends, among other things, a comprehensive street maintenance program, which does include some more aggressive maintenance approaches than we have done in the past. One of those is the establishment of a year-round crack ceiling crew. That's, I think, going to be very, very beneficial for us, we're anxious, I think, to see that program get started and see if we can keep those streets that were already graded good, keep those in good condition for hopefully an extended period of time. Notwithstanding that, funding levels for our overall street maintenance continue to be below what we'd like to see them at, so we're going to have to continue to work on that challenge in the years to come. I try to never leave away from a budget briefing or hearing to take an opportunity to remind everyone that we are a service-based organization and that people and personnel are our number one asset. As important as cars and trucks and brick and mortar are in the delivery of our services, the people are the most important asset and significant that we have. It is by far our largest category of expense, and it is one of the most significant impactors in terms of our expenses, so we have to try to align those with available resources. What we are and the priority that we place on our people does not change with the economy. I've told employees many times that, you know, what happens on Wall Street today in one sense makes no difference to the person whose water line broke or sewer line broke, or just had an accident on I-35. We have to respond. That is an expectation of service and service level that we provide and as the local government, and that doesn't change with what happens on Wall Street today. Our budget recommends a continuation of our strategic hiring freeze, but there are no layoffs and no furloughs listed in the budget for the second consecutive year. There will be no compensation adjustments for general government employees, with the exception of civil service, police and fire, where pay step increases are funded. We continue our commitment to TMRS, which is the pension plan for the city, funding year three of an eight-year plan associated with that. And we also did something significant this year with regard to our health insurance, and it is establish a self-insured health insurance fund. Doesn't change necessarily the benefits or the program, although those will be modified. It really does change the way we go about financing and hopefully managing our health insurance in the coming years. One very important and integral part of our service delivery in this community is our public service agencies. We receive every year more requests than we can fund by public service agencies who provide very needed and beneficial services to our community, but there are always limited funds associated with that. You see on the chart or board, a listing of those agencies that we'll be funding or recommending this year if the budget is adopted, from the general fund, from also the motel fund, many, many agencies that again provide services that hopefully what we do is leverage city funds and city dollars and other dollars to help those organizations provide those services to the community. Economic development, a very, very important aspect, one of our strategic focus areas in the council's overall strategic plan, growing our tax base was one of those focus areas, and we have said many times for several years that economic development is critical to meet the demands for current service and projected growth. The FY 2011 budget continues funding of economic development, includes about $300,000 as a placeholder investment to maintain our matrix funding level with the economic development corporation. Our total commitment to economic development still remains in the $2 million range, and it's also very significant. And again, I want to reiterate that as we've stressed, I've stressed in previous budgets and in this one too, growing the tax base is essential to not just servicing future growth, but also servicing current service needs. Our capital improvement program, which I think is the last slide that I have, but our capital improvement program continues to be one of the largest capital improvement programs that we've undertaken in our history. As of June 30th of this year, over $100 million has been allocated and is underway in various stages on capital improvement projects, from water and sewer projects, transportation projects, departure projects, delivery projects, to public safety improvements. Really covers the gamut of services that we provide. There are a lot of sources that we use for those projects, utility revenue bonds, what you acted on earlier tonight, general obligation bonds, our general operating budget. Certainly good to point out that we don't rely just on our debt instruments for our capital improvement program, but we also allocate funds when we can through our general operating budget. And the budget this year contains about $6 million in additional funding associated with the ICP. At this time, I'm going to pause, I don't know if you want to pause here and turn over Tracy, let her go through the tax rule, this has to do with item six. That concludes my comments relative to item five.
Okay. I think we'll stop here, we're doing public hearings on the budget itself, and then we'll move forward.
Because this is the idea of the cloud, the public hearing is our natural. Now I do have, again, just in the interest of time, because we've gone over them before, but I do have slides and some information laws and the other funds that we have in budget focused primarily on the general fund, that usually is of interest to most folks, but I'd be happy to go over some of those if council or anyone else is asked.
Good. Questions come up? Thank you for an excellent presentation, on the budget, great overview, a combination of, like you said, seven months' worth of work and staff from one end of the city to the other, from every department, from all levels. It's an amazing effort and one in which, like you said, in 45 days, we're going to start all over again, so you can see your own process virtually, so. So council, questions or comments on the budget itself? If not, this item requires public hearing, we'll post it for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, ask any questions or comment on the budget for the fiscal year 2010-2011, please come forward, state your name and address for the record prior to making Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and at this time we will move on to item number six, the tax rule. I've already read this into the record, and you just put out, which you go forward with this presentation.
Thank you Mayor, Council. This is going to get into the more technical section of the agenda related to the budget. It's my belief of the ordinance that will adopt the other one in the actual certified rule, the amount is 3.3 billion. In this amount, you have the, it's considered the City of Temple portion, and then also the, maybe 2005 began the tax freeze on properties for people 65 or older, that amounts 328 million, and then we have our tax increment district, which is 129.2 million, with a total taxable value of 3.3 billion. Next is the tax rate and the tax levy. As David mentioned earlier, the total proposed tax rate is .5679, that's .0033 less or more than the FY 2010 rate. Exactly when you compare that, David had said earlier, historically back to 2002, the blue line is the total tax rate, the red line is the effective tax rate. This is the first year that the proposed rate is below the effective rate by negative 1.1%. The total tax levy, you take the total tax rate and apply the rate, the total tax levy for FY 2011 is 17.9 million, and FY 2010 is 17.9 million, for the difference between the proposed budget for 2011 compared to 2010 is negative $35. Just to summary, there's three items, the public hearing to adopt the budget, CIP and fiscal budget policies, approving the tax rule, authorizing the calculation of the amount of tax, and then the public hearing levying the taxes and setting the tax rate. Okay. Questions? That concludes our presentation, I'd be happy to answer your questions. Moving on to the debate.
If there are anything else to add, I would like to echo your comments and thanks to the city staff, Tracy and Melissa, Miranda in particular in finance, and Miranda in my office, all did an exceptional amount of work as they do every year, so I want to say thank you to the public hearing.
Counsel, my apologies, I skipped to number five without action, so we need to go back and capture that, and then we'll go on to the public hearings on items six and seven. Item five, in which we conducted the public hearing, without a comment, is to consider a resolution adopting the city's budget for the fiscal year October 1st, 2010 through September 30th of 2011. And a motion from the council at this time.
Motion to approve item five.
Second.
Motion second for approval of item five. Further discussion, item secretary.
Council member Dan.
Aye.
Council member Jane.
Aye.
Mayor, Chair.
Aye.
Sorry about that. Item six, we've heard the presentations, and we've got without question comments from council. We'll move to the public hearing on the first and final reading for item six, and so anyone wishing to speak before the council on the tax law for the fiscal year, or for the tax year of 2010, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Seeing no one wishing to speak, council, action regarding the adopting of the ordinance, approving the tax rule.
Motion to approve item six.
Second.
Motion second for item six, if there's no further discussion, then secretary.
Council member Dan.
Aye.
Council member Jane.
Aye.
Mayor, Chair.
Aye.
Item seven is again a first and final reading and a public hearing, we've heard the presentation, and at this time I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak before the council on the levying and the setting of the tax rate for the tax year 2010 and making appropriations for the regular operation of the city, please come forward, state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and council, I would ask you to, if you're so inclined to make a motion, please read the motion as stated in your agenda.
I'll take a stab at this. I move that the ordinance setting 2010-2011 tax rate in the amount of 0.5679 for $100 valuation, comprised of 0.3300 for maintenance and operations, and 0.2379 for debt service paid off.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
And motion is second, is there further discussion or questioning? If being none, then secretary.
Council member Dan.
Aye.
Council member Jane.
Aye.
Mayor, Chair.
Aye.
Item eight, to consider adopting a resolution funding the rates for medical prescription insurance and dental insurance for employees under age 65 retirees, as well as life insurance, accidental death and dismemberment insurance, in long-term disability insurance. Ms. House, good evening.
Good evening, thank you Mayor, Council. On July the 15th, the trustees of the City of Temple Employee Benefits Trust awarded contracts for employee benefits for fiscal year 2011, and with the adoption of the budget, the city council needs to fund the trust to allow for the payment of these benefits as well as the bi-weekly transfer of contributions made by the city and by the employees and retirees to the trust. Glad to answer any questions, you may leave.
Great, thank you, Mrs. House. Council questions on this slide? If they being none, entertain a motion for the resolution to fund the items.
Motion to approve item eight.
Second.
Motion second for approval of item eight on the insurance items, if there's no further discussion, then secretary.
Council member Dan.
Aye.
Council member Jane.
Aye.
Mayor, Chair.
Aye.
And that concludes the budget process for this year, so we've adopted the budget and the tax rates, congratulations to the board, the staff, Tracy, and thank you all for that work, and we will now refer to October 1st and implement all of them. Next item is the consent agenda, item, all this, under this section, consent are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item may be removed from the consent agenda after request of the council member, it will be considered separately. Council, this is item nine, A3 rule, looks like our T this time, we've got obviously a number of pet tracks, a few of new, and another second reading items. Anything that you wish to have removed for individual consideration, presentation and for voting purposes? Now I'll entertain a motion for approval of item nine, the consent agenda, A through T. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion, is there a question? If being none, then secretary.
Council member Dan.
Aye.
Council member Jane.
Aye.
Mayor, Chair.
Aye.
Item 10, first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance abandoning 150 feet of the 15-foot wide alley in block seven, Eugenia Terrace Edition, retaining a 15-foot wide utility easement in its place and abandoning 100 feet of the 50-foot wide right-of-way of South Third Street in block- of the fifty-foot wide right-of-way of South Third Street in block seven, Eugenia Terrace Edition, both being adjacent to the south right-of-way of West Avenue P. Ms. Lamm.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, and this abandonment request, we actually have two requests. Normally, it's just one item for abandonment, but as you see on the screen, we have the alley that is marked on the area in this red dash oval, and it is the one hundred and fifty feet of the fifteen-foot wide alley. And then just to the east of that, we have the remaining portion of Third Street in this particular block. And just to give you a little history on this block, block seven, Eugenia Terrace, in nineteen forty-four, city council approved the remaining or actually made approval of abandonment of all the other street right-of-way and alley abandements in this block for the federal public housing units. And so I believe the reason that this section was not abandoned at that time was because we had two residences in this area. So now the Temple Housing Authority owns all this property to the south, and we have the Tim Bell apartment in this area. So they're wanting to develop this property here for additional housing on that area. And this is just the map showing those areas on our parcel map. And as you can see, we do have in this alleyway, the Temple Housing Authority owns the property on the east side of the alley, and on the west side of the alley, we have three property owners. And so if the alley is abandoned, then all the abandoned property owners would be eligible to buy their portion, the proportionate portion of their property along the alleyway. And the Third Street right-of-way that is requested for abandonment actually is between both property that the housing authority owns. So if that is abandoned, the housing authority would be the only property owner eligible to buy that portion or to buy that street right-of-way. And it's a little interesting, I thought, the fact that when this was abandoned in nineteen forty-four, sometime after that abandonment of the Third Street right-of-way to the south in that, they actually developed another street to the east of that, and that is labeled as Third Street. So if you go out there on the street, you see Third Street, but it's a narrow street, and this was actually platted as Third Street in Eugenia Terrace, block seven. So as I mentioned, the Temple Housing Authority is requesting this abandonment. We notified all utility providers. There were no objections to the abandonment request, but since the alley has existing utilities, the utility providers are requesting that that alleyway, if it then be converted into a blanket easement for protection of all the utilities in that alleyway. And since there are no utilities in the street right-of-way, there was no objection to that request, and so there was no need for that to be converted into an easement. Broker's opinion value was broken into the, down to the two segments requested. So for the alleyway, the broker's opinion value is five hundred for the alleyway and then three thousand for the South Third Street right-of-way. And so staff is recommending approval of the abandonment request with the recommendation that we retain a fifteen-foot wide utility easement in place of the abandoned alley area. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Thank you, Ms. House. Kristen, on those three properties along the alley, they have the opportunity to buy the property, they're not compelled to buy the property.
That's correct.
If they do not buy the property, is it made available to the other side, and they can acquire that whole section of alley?
That is correct. The system is set up for that, but in order to do that, the property owners would have to sign a waiver, a document that they're not interested in purchasing their portion.
And if neither side is interested, then even though it may be abandoned, it still remains city property?
Yes. We desire this until we sell it.
So theoretically, you could have a little sliver of city property in between.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
It would no longer be a right-of-way, I mean alleyway, but it would still be our property.
But it'd be our property and so.
Yes.
All right, so theoretical. I'm just curious how that works. Good, thank you. Other questions? Counsel? If not, this item requires a public hearing. This is the first reading, and I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. Anyone wish to speak to the council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, your pleasure on the first reading of the abandonment of the property as a reserve.
Motion to approve item Jane.
Second. Motion is second. Further discussion? If being none, item secretary.
Counsel number Dan.
Aye.
Counsel number Jane second.
Aye.
Mayor Judge.
Aye.
Mayor Judge.
Aye. Item eleven, first reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages more than fifty percent and less than seventy-five percent revenue from alcohol sales for on-premise consumption in the restaurant on the south one hundred feet of lap two, block three, West South Chapman Edition, located at seven fifteen South First Street. Excuse me, it was WS Chapman Edition, located at seven fifteen South First Street. Mr. Mayberry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicants for this case honor Manuel and Elias Montega for Mr. AC Boston, who is the property owner. The, this is the most common conditional use permit request for a restaurant to request. It is the standard for restaurants. The property is zoned commercial. It has two hundred and ten feet of furniture on East Avenue H and on South First combined. The planning and zoning commission made their recommendation to defer some of the conditions of the conditional use permit to a later date, and I will explain that in a moment. The staff has added additional recommendations subsequent to the PMZ's recommendation that clarifies some timelines and establishes some consequences for failing to meet those timelines. So I'll attempt to explain those well when we get to that point. This is an aerial of the subject property there at First and Avenue H. This shows the distance measured from door to door to the nearest protected use, which is St. James United Methodist Church at WH and Third. The distance is five hundred and forty-three feet, and it is greater than the minimum required of three hundred feet, so it's good. This is some shots of some of the surrounding vicinity of the subject property. To the north is a vacant building that was formerly a karate academy. To the east is vacant land. To the west is a major auto repair facility, and to the south is a car wash. This is the future land use and character map for the subject property, and it is designated as urban center, and the CEP request conforms to the future land use and character map. This is the thoroughfare plan for the area. East Avenue H is designated as a major arterial, as is South First Street, and the request complies with that thoroughfare plan as well. This aerial shows the utilities that serve the property. There's a six-inch sewer line and a six-inch water line that serve the property. The zoning for the property is shown on the screen. The yellow shaded areas are residential types of zoning. There's two F zoning, which is the duplex zoning district to the east. Although it's zoned duplex, it's mostly single-family houses that are built on the ground there. And then there's a multifamily one zoning district farther to the west, but everything else you see in white is some form of commercial type zoning. This is a view of the citywide sidewalk and trails master plan for the area. You just have a star for the vicinity of the subject property. It calls for a spine trail or sidewalk along South First, which is to be ten to twelve feet in width. The plan also calls in the blue dot that you see, the dotted line you see on the screen, for a local connector trail or sidewalk with a six and eight feet in width along East Avenue H. There is currently a small segment of a sidewalk on the subject property, and it's about four feet wide, and it's, it'll show up on your site plan that you have as part of your packet. One of the staff recommendations to try to bring this property a little closer in line with the sidewalk trails master plan is to recommend the widening of the sidewalk and the extension of it from four feet to, in width, to six feet in width, and to bring it from the corner of East Avenue H and South First on over to the driveway, the nearest driveway, which is approximately forty feet. There's just grass in that area now in the sidewalk, as you can see, currently stopped There are seven criteria for conditional use permits in the zoning ordinance that serve as a guide for you in making your decision. I'll comment on a few of them. In regard to criteria number one about property values, the Temple Police Department reports that since January of two thousand and nine, there've been four calls to the site that were alcohol-related, and those were, may have been related to someone being inebriated on the property. I don't have the details on them, but I do have just the numbers of since two thousand and nine, four calls. In regard to number four, which has to do with the design and location and arrangement of driveways and parking spaces. The floor plan of the restaurant shows eighty seats per the zoning ordinance. There's one parking space required per three seats. Twenty-seven seats in all are required. If you take the karate building and the restaurant, which are all under common ownership, you have thirty-three spaces available on both properties. So there's enough parking for the restaurant with six spaces to spare, so in the future, any business that may move into that, the former karate studio may be limited on its part on what can happen there by the number of parking spaces that are available, which are the six that are left over once the restaurant has kind of used its spaces. This site plan shows the landscaping for the subject property. There is a criteria related to landscaping, which is number seven on the list. There are three hundred and forty-five square feet of plant material on the private property side of the property line, and it's here in the lower right corner. It's not formal landscaping, it's basically just grass and ground cover. The site plan for the conditional use permit shows an additional triangle here of landscaping that amounts to a hundred and twenty-five square feet. Staff recommends filling in these areas with approximately fifteen shrubs. That number is based on the property frontage and what would normally be required for new construction as part of this conditional use permit and as part of trying to meet somewhat the spirit of the criteria that I listed out for you previously, we make that recommendation. Ten notices were mailed of the planning and zoning condition public hearing, and one was returned in favor, and you see that as a green A on the screen. The notice of the planning and zoning commission's hearing was printed in the newspaper on August fifth. Now I'll go over the planning and zoning commission's recommendations for this case. They voted eight to zero to recommend approval of this conditional use permit subject to the following conditions: that general conditions that apply to all conditional use permits for on-premise consumption of alcohol as found in section seven dash six eleven B of the zoning ordinance apply; that the applicant's site plan and foreplan are exhibits to the ordinance that grants the conditional use permit; that the existing sidewalk segment along South First Street be extended to the nearest driveway and be widened to six feet in width; that the proposed parking spaces must be, on the two pro, on the property for the restaurant and the karate, former karate building, must be striped according to the conditional use permit site plan. There currently, the spaces near the karate establishment are unstriped right now. The fifth recommendation was that a minimum of fifteen five-gallon shrubs be provided on the private property near the sign and on the proposed landscape island adjacent to the, one of the parking spaces on the conditional use permit site plan; that wheel stops be provided for spaces along East Avenue H to prevent vehicle bumpers from encroaching onto the travel path of Avenue H, and that has already been done by the applicants. The wheel stops are already there. And then the planning and zoning commission added to these conditions, number seven, that implementation and enforcement of items three and five, which are the sidewalk-related recommendation and the landscaping-related recommendation, be delayed until January first, 2011. Before which date, a preliminary site plan for the property with equal or better site amenities must be presented and approved by the planning director. That was as a result of the property owner anticipating potentially redeveloping the site where the restaurant and the karate stu, former karate studio are located, and he did not want applicants to invest this money to make these improvements if he were going to possibly redevelop the site in the future and have to possibly undo them. So that is the extent of the planning and zoning commission's recommendation. Upon further review, staff has added three more conditions that relate to condition number seven and provide a timeline and some consequences for not meeting the requirement of number seven. The first then is if the preliminary site plan with equal or better site amenities is not presented to you and approved by the planning director by January first, 2011, that the CEP will be presented to you again with a staff recommendation for revocation. As you know, you can revoke conditional use permits if the conditions of the permit are not being met. If a building permit application that conforms to the approved preliminary site plan, which is mentioned in item eight, is not submitted and approved by the Director of Construction Safety by February first, 2011, then the CEP once again will be presented to city council with a staff recommendation for revocation. And then finally, if the improvements shown on the approved building permit application are not installed on the subject property by April first, 2011, then the CEP will be presented to the city council with a staff recommendation for revocation. And at this point, I could answer any questions that the council might have on this case.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayberry. Counsel, questions or comments?
Do you think it would be possible, and this probably will show my love of Mexican food and this location, but at the karate location, sometimes parking becomes a problem. And on the building, all around it are signs saying toe-away zone if you park here. Will those be removed?
It's my understanding that that was put there by the owner after the karate place was abandoned or vacated, just to keep the place in order, sort of.
Okay. So is that yes, that those signs are being removed?
Yes, yes, because they would be needed to require without parking for the restaurant.
Right. You have the spaces there, but then the signs that say no parking.
I think it's very confusing.
Yeah, you know, we've got our aggie friend, Russell Snyder, who's involved. He's not here to defend himself. Okay. Counsel, are there questions? If not, this item requires a public hearing, and I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. Anyone wishing to speak before the council on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the record prior to making your comments.
My name is Hector Ortega, and I'm the manager of Karate Restaurant. If you're in Temple, all I have to say is that, you know, if you want us to make the sidewalk bigger, we're willing to do that. You know, we'll do that for the, you know, if they want us to. And, well, I mean, anything they want us to do to equalize it, we'll do it. Anything, you know, make the sidewalk, you know, we'll do the lines, anything they want us to do, we'll do it. And thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Ortega? Fair enough. Mr. Ortega, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and federal council for action on item eleven regarding the conditional use permit. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second for approval of a conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages on the subject property at seven fifteen South First Street. If there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary.
Counselor number Dan.
Aye.
Counselor number James.
Aye.
Mayor Jackson.
Aye. Item twelve is a first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a zoning change from urban estate district to general retail district on lot two, block one, Simpson addition, phase two, located at eleven seven twenty, West Adams Avenue. Mr. Mayberry?
Thank you, sir. The applicants are Mark and Monica Brown. The purpose is to establish a small office for retail development on this twenty-two-thousand five-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot lot. The only access to the street, the daily street that has access, that this property has access to is West Adams. The aerial is shown on the screen. The subject property has a yellow line around it. It's near the intersection of West Adams and Morgan's Point Road slash FM twenty-two-seventy-one. To the west is a veterinarian clinic. To the north are some residential uses. To the south is a shopping center, which is across West Adams, and to the east is residential use. The future land use and character map shows the subject property and its surroundings as suburban commercial and the rezoning request complies with the future land use and character map. The subject, or the, um, the warfare plan shows the subject property as fronting on West Adams, which is a major arterial, and the rezoning request complies with the warfare Simpson sewer line and a eight-inch water line serves the property and so public facilities are in place for this potential development. This is, again, the sidewalk and trails master plan. West Adams and East Adams, for that matter, is designated as a trail, a spine trail on that plan, which is a ten-to-twelve-foot-wide sidewalk or trail, depending on the context of where the trail is placed. The current plat for the property shows a six-foot sidewalk that needs to be installed when the build, when the private property is developed with the potential office and retail space. Although the sidewalk plan shows the ten-to-twelve-foot trail or sidewalk along the frontage of Adams, we can basically with just a base rezoning only go with the six-foot that's required in our, uh, by the plat for the property. So there will be once it's developed, a six-foot sidewalk for the property. This is the zoning for the property and its surroundings. Several general retail zoning categories for the surrounding properties at this intersection, and there's also still some agricultural zoning left from when it was annexed. These are the dimensional standards for general retail. The maximum height is three stories. There's a fifteen-foot front yard setback, a ten-foot side yard setback, and then a ten-foot courtyard setback when it's adjacent to residential uses as this one is to the rear. Just to recap on what general retail allows, it's the most, um, broadest of the retail categories in our zoning ordinance. It allows restaurants, grocery stores, department stores, offices, and things of that nature. Eight notices were mailed at the Planning and Zoning Commission's hearing and one was returned in favor of the request and none were returned disapproving of the request. On August fifth, a notice of the Planning and Zoning Commission's hearing was published in the newspaper. At its onset of August sixteenth, meaning the Planning and Zoning Commission voted eight to zero to recommend approval of this case. The P and Z and staff recommend approval for the following reasons: it complies with the future land use and character map; it complies with the thoroughfare plan and there are public facilities in place to serve the property. And at this point, I can answer any questions that the council might have on this case.
Thank you, Ms. Mayberry. Council, questions on this presentation? I guess, can you confirm for me that our grant that we got for the safe routes to school sidewalk, I guess, just went from three seventeen to the school and now from twenty not to twenty-two seventy-one, back to the school?
Right, Alan. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that and I see someone coming to help me.
Couldn't move fast enough. The grant does provide for it to go all the way to the intersection of twenty-two seventy-one. So some comments he made about the six-foot wide sidewalk, that will be taken care of through the grant and it will be larger than six-foot wide. It will be a minimum of ten-foot wide.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. And so there's enough in the plat, there's enough room for this to occur? The applicant is obviously aware of that.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lattler. With no further questions, this item requires a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. Anyone wishing to speak before the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record on this slide. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure, action for item number twelve. Motion to approve item twelve?
Second.
Motion in the second. No further discussion, Madam Secretary.
Counselor number Dan.
Aye.
Counselor number James.
Aye.
Mayor Jackson.
Aye. Item thirteen is consider adopting resolution approving the preliminary plat of North Cliff Phase Nine, seventy-six residential lots planned for single-family uses on approximately eighteen-point-three acres of land located south of North Cliff Drive and west of FM twenty-two seventy-one, partially in the city of Temple, partially in the city of Temple's extraterritorial jurisdiction, and partially in the city of Belton's extraterritorial jurisdiction, with exceptions requested for street width, curb and gutter, and curve radii. Ms. Lattler?
Yes, and I have a picture of the location of the plat on the screen and it is this yellow boundary and it, actually, it's very unusual. Most of this plat is outside the Temple city limits. This red line is the city Temple limits, where this portion of the plat is within the city of Temple. And then this portion, everything beyond this line is outside of the Temple city limits. And this is a, the plat that actually shows that city limit line going right through it. So, and just to remind you, this portion is what is inside the city. I have the next slide that will explain a little bit more. Since your item description, you brought up the fact that this plat not only is partially in the city limits of Temple, but it's also in the city of Temple's ETJ. A portion of it is, the rest of the portion is in the Belton city ETJ also. So, and this is just a close-up of the segments. This yellow portion is the portion that is inside the Temple city limits. This is the portion of the plat that's in our city limits. And you can see a little boundary line. And so this red portion is the portion that is within the Belton ETJ. And so this green area is the boundary line, or it's, the green area is in the Temple ETJ. And so it's very unusual. I've never had a plat like this before where we had so many different things going on with this. But, so that, just to give you an idea of there are other entities involved than just the city of Temple. And then this is a copy of the plat showing the utilities. The developer is proposing that have this development serviced by water and sewer facilities. And so the background of this plat is that DRC deemed this plat administratively complete on March thirtieth of two thousand and ten. It's eighteen-point-three acres, seventy-six lots for residential development. It's located south of North Cliff Drive and it has four dwelling units per acre. The portion within the Temple city limits is done under a planned development, a single-family two. And parterries in the sum of thirteen thousand and fifty are required and that only includes the portion of the property, or the plat that is within Temple's authority to approve, which would be the portions within our ETJ and the portions within our city limits. This is the final phase of the North Cliff development. This is phase nine. And so the developer is asking for exceptions that I will address in the next slide. But, so, I'll move on to that. So the requested exceptions, just to kind of give you a little explanation of that, since this is the last phase of the North Cliff development, the developer is asking that we allow the final phase to match the development that is already in place. This is, since it is primarily outside of the Temple city limits, this plat or the development prior phases were developed at county standards. And so the exceptions involve the curve linear street radius for the curve that is actually connecting an existing street at a curve to a proposed new street. The exceptions also for the pavement width in my way, and that's basically to allow the use of a rural local street section having a twenty, actually, it's, uh, they're asking for a twenty-two-foot-wide pavement with no curb, curb and gutter, and that would match the previous phases of that development. And that actually takes care of the last two exceptions so that instead of using a twenty-foot asphalt pavement with curb, they would be asking to match the prior developments with the twenty-two-wide pavement with no ribbon curbing. And so on August the sixteenth of two thousand and ten, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended eight to zero for approval of this plat pending the following conditions: that the city council approved the developer's requested exception that I just went over and I won't go back through those again, they're on the screen. But also that, that since this is a preliminary plat, that it would be subject to additions and/or alter operations to the engineering plans as required by the engineering department. And also that a final plat would not be submitted for the development review committee review until the preliminary plat has been signed by all jurisdictions involved and filed with the planning directors. And so there are other entities that have authority on this plat. And so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those for you.
Thank you, Ms. Lattler. Council, questions regarding this plat? Is, have you coordinated with the city of Belton or does the developer have they done that? So I guess one's wrong with that, that we're in concert, that we're not going to do anything that would be contrary to what Belton wants for their portion of it and it all fits together?
Well, what we're proposing is we would be the first ones reviewing this plat. And so then it would go on to county and then would go on to Belton. And so before we would actually proceed for the final plat process, we would require that they present us a preliminary plat that has already been signed by all the different entities. And so we would not take it forward until all the entities involved have signed off on the preliminary plat.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Eric.
Sure.
At the risk of throwing a little mud in the water here, confusing things a little bit, it may not be exactly relevant. Normally, we approve plaits that are, of course, in our city limits. We also, with the authority that we have with the county, can approve plaits that are in our ETJ. I think the earlier map that we showed, there's a question in my mind, in December while I was not on the job, I was on vacation, I believe we annexed that area, including, I may be wrong and I can be corrected here, but if you can go back to your, the map, yeah, that, the colored map, yeah. And we've got the applicants here, maybe they can shed some light on this as well. But my, my memory was that we completed an annexation of this area that, of course, the yellow was already in the city, that green area that was in our ETJ. And quite by mistake, the portion that was, that's pink, that's actually in Belton's ETJ. So we're, we're attempting to resolve that issue with the city of Belton over their ETJ, but we may have to come back and, uh, we amend our, well, de-annex or amend our annexation ordinance, but I do think that green area was annexed back in December. I don't know, if somebody in planning or the applicant is aware of that. And in terms of this plat, it doesn't probably make a whole lot of difference at that part because whether it's in our city or in our ETJ, by agreement with the county, if it's our ETJ, we would approve that plat. So that part really doesn't really matter. I just, there is a, we are, as Mr. Tamerly, uh, has, um, yeah, Lattler pointed out, we are making arrangements with Belton to approve that portion because it really is in their ETJ and...
And so the portion that would be within, and I believe we did conclude that annexation as well, that, so that there is really no Temple ETJ related to this and so that wouldn't require any county approval?
Yeah, I believe the applicant asked for voluntary annexation of the whole track. We did, so, not realizing that that pink area was in Belton's ETJ, but I think the green area is already in city. But I think for our purposes, the city engineer, though, I think, has a comment about a couple of the exceptions and whether they're in our portion or in Belton's portion.
Yes, in the name of Mayor Gelson, the one comment I would add to the discussion is the curve linear street exception is a portion that's appearing in the lower left-hand corner and that appears to be in Belton's ETJ. And so the question, of course, is do we have authority to approve that?
Yeah, and I would say that portion we do not, because that's the portion that they're going to have to approve. So just clarifying that, that condition.
Just for added curiosity, who provides the utilities?
Probably the actual, they're proposing, we did, way back in, earlier than December, back in October, November, we entered into a cost-sharing agreement with them to provide an offset extension in their, their building, a system that the wastewater will go up to our lift station at the corner of twenty-two seventy-one in Adams, West Adams. We will be providing utilities in the whole area. At the time we did that, I was with the belief that we would be annexing that entire track because the applicant was seeking voluntary annexation.
So the portion that's in the ETJ, if we don't have authority to approve it, since it's in Belton's ETJ, but at some point in time, pending our discussion and dialogue with city of Belton, could end up being within the, because of our territory, but I would presume, and in the meantime, we're not allowing them, we approve our part and it's conditioned upon their part. So we don't have to take it out of our motion or anything, it's just, it's just moved, we don't have the authority, but we can put it in there so that if sometime it is within the city, we have the, we've got it.
Well, you're just approving the plat on, in my opinion, on the yellow and green area, which is really should all be yellow in that picture. I think, I think that all is in the city. I didn't make it to, well, I'm sorry.
Other comments, of course? It's merely plat approval, so that it does not require a public hearing. Council, entertain a motion, given the comments of Mr. Grant.
Motion to adjourn bottom thirteen.
Second. Motion second for approval of the preliminary plat of North Cliff Phase Nine. No further discussion, Madam Secretary.
Counselor number Dan.
Aye.
Counselor number James.
Aye.
Mayor Jackson.
Aye. Item fourteen is consider adopting a resolution authorizing the mayor to cast an official ballot for the election of four members to the Texas Municipal League and the government of this full board of trustees. It's got me down for that one, so we participate in the election of the, of members to the, to the league and so we have the opportunity to vote for those members. I think it's been customary that the mayor has, has cast his ballots in the past and so just ask for that before... and so just ask for that authority once again, to entertain a motion on that resolution. If you have questions. Motion to approve? Second. Motion is second. No further discussion, Madam Secretary.
Counselor number Dan.
Aye.
Counselor number Dan.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Jackson.
Aye. Item fifteen, consider adopting resolution appointing one member to the tree board to fill an expired term through March first of 2011. I believe the P&amp;Z position of Mr. James Scott says recommended to fill that position. There's no other recommendations for that position, and I'll entertain a motion for approval of Mr. James Scott. Mr. Cooper.
Sir Gaby.
Motion is second. No further discussion, Madam Secretary.
Counselor number Dan.
Aye.
Counselor number James.
Aye.
If you may continue. Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your attendance and participation in this evening's meeting. That concludes the agenda. We are adjourned.